And I think we spoke about this at a previous board meeting is that the President can appoint, can establish committees. And I just, my opinion on the matter is that that may be a policy that we want to revisit, not because of Ms. America or any other President, past, future, present. It's just in an effort to encourage communication. That's something that the Communication Audit in 2013 recommended, not specific to this policy, but encouraging communication amongst board members. The current Communication Audit came back with the same sentiment. And I just think the more we can do to encourage communication between the Board, it just does no harm. And so, that's why I'd like to see further discussion on Policy 8150. I just, I think it's a win-win if we can take a look at that and see if there can be some improvement there.
Is there any other board comment?
I would like to, I think as I stated at a previous meeting, we did discuss 8150 in the Policy Committee, and the majority of the committee did not feel that the policy needed to be changed. Because we elect Board Officers to lead, and if they feel there is a need for a temporary committee to be formed, we need to give them the power to do that. That's how we got the Student Assignment Plan Committee. That's how we've gotten Superintendent Search Committee, is through that process. Mrs. Gotti.
So, that's exactly what I was going to say about that particular policy related to the President appointing an ad hoc committee. I think that's why we elect Board Officers. They need to help us out by doing the extra work that they're more familiar with, some of the issues than we may be on the rest of the Board. When it comes to the public participation at Board meetings, and I appreciate Mrs. Miller's comments, this is one I struggle with because I was the Board President during very, very, very lengthy Board comments. And so, I did during that time, because I felt like there was a lot of redundancy. You could say what you needed to say in three minutes. You didn't need to take five minutes to say it. I did attend a number of trainings, one in particular with the Attorney General's Office. And I think that while, well definitely, the legislature does give you five minutes, sometimes they cut people off and they don't continue on. I mean, they just quit at the end of their time. So, for me, when we have really hot topic items, I think three minutes is an adequate amount of time to get through that. And maybe it's just because of the experience that I had, that I would say that three minutes for me was completely fine. I can read the comments if somebody wants to add more, but typically, what I observed happening was a reiteration of what had already been said. So, I am going to vote to support that, just because I saw what happened when you do five minutes and then you extend and you're here for three or four hours, listening to public comment. And I think three minutes gets a lot more people through in an hour, especially if you have a big topic. And I would hope that we are all accessible enough, that if a community member wanted to talk to us, they could do that. They can also email us as well. So, there are a number of avenues that I think folks can take. And I do realize that coming down here does take time. It takes me a while to get to the district offices as well, and I appreciate that. But I'm going to support that policy change.
Ms. Ryan.
So, I'm also on the Policy Committee. And initially, I had supported this policy to shorten public comment, period. But after thinking about it some more and having Gina Miller talk about it, and she brought up very valid points, that it's harder for English language learners. It's harder for people who've never spoken to the Board. I remember the first time I spoke to the Board. And I do think, when you're talking about accessibility and equity, and those are things that I am so passionate about, that we have to make sure that we give those to everybody in the space that they're at, and the whatever communication skills and experience that they have to talk to us. So, I think that's really important. And further, for more engaging with our constituents and stuff, I think I'm going to personally try to do more things where, I know Ms. America and I had talked about this on our phone call before the meeting, about having more like forums or something in our district for people to engage more, one, but also have a conversation with us. So, it's a double-ended thing, like having people speak here in front of all of us, but then also having some other ways for them to communicate, to be on just email and cellphone and everything. But I think I'm voting no.
And if I can expand on that, I think what we were discussing kind of stemmed from a session that actually Mrs. Gotti and I attended together last year, where there were some different school boards presenting about their different community engagement practices, and thinking about what could we do as a Board and as a District to support that. Because right now, essentially, if you're a Board Member and you want to have a meeting in your District, it is on you. You schedule it, you organize it, you get the information out. And I've had people say, well, is that you as a Board Member, is that you as a person running for office? Like, what's the intent of this meeting? And I think if we had an actual structure in place of, hey, once a quarter, we're going to provide an opportunity for all Board Members to go out and have a community forum. We can send out information. I think that's something that, depending on what we do with Policy 8150, that could fall under the Board Governance Committee, since they're also going to handle Board Communication-type activities. So, that is a definite possibility for us to look at in the future.
Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you. You know, I think it's very important that we have public comment and that we are available to our constituents. Reducing it down to three minutes per speaker, that would increase the number of speakers within that hour to 20 versus 12, if I did my math correctly, versus 12 speakers speaking at five minutes. And I would agree that, having sat on the Board for a while, quite a few of the messages do get very redundant. And the fact that we are accessible by emails, somebody and many people email all eight of us, or nine of us are, at the same time. And we're also available by phone. And I think one of my biggest concerns is that, especially during the sex ed curriculum, that the meeting got hijacked by public comment. It really did. We had a lot of things that we needed to discuss at the Board, have presented to us, and instead, we're listening to three hours of public comment that were, we became a forum for people to come and hijack our meeting and take a topic that there were both very passionate people on both sides, but it got out of hand. And it put undue strain, I think, on the Board, on the Administration. And it's very, it can be very intimidating, sitting up here, when you have a policy that says, well, we can extend it past 60 minutes. And you got an entire crowd out there that's all looking at you like, you better extend it. And so, at least in some of the other instances, we would have been able to get 20 speakers within that hour. Maybe we would have reduced that timeframe to make it more manageable. And also, with that being said, there are people that were out there pushing their personal agendas, their personal beliefs, as far as, you know, whether they were pro-this or pro-that, anti-this, anti-that. And that just, again, led to, I think, undue strain. And so, that's why I am in favor of saying three minutes. You can say what you need to say, and you can always give your full public, or full comments to the Board, so you can come and say what you want, but you can always leave more information. And you can also email Board Members. So, I do believe that the three minutes is a very reasonable amount of time, and it allows us to actually do our job of holding our school Board meeting in public.
Ms. Williams.
So, I'm happy to hear that other Board Members have been considering having forums, as well as something I've been talking about for quite some time. I know Mrs. Gotti and I had had that conversation a while back as well. However, as, sitting in the Board Leadership role, I distinctly recall in one of those meetings of being attacked, because I went to check on another Board Member. I won't say who, and I won't look at that person right now, so I'll look at you, Ms. America. But I was attacked publicly for quite some time, for stepping away from the Board Table during public comment. But I still sit here today.
I was too.
But I will still sit here today, and I will say that five minutes is our due diligence, because the reality of it is, is, and I'm sure Mrs. Gotti can attest to this, is not all Board Members return phone calls, and not all Board Members return emails. And we all have busy lives, and we have families. And so, there are times where it's very challenging to, especially if it's a hot topic issue, which I don't necessarily foresee us having one of those anytime soon, to that extent. But I still sit here and say that five minutes is appropriate for those parties that cannot reach their Board Member, for parties that are not being heard. And so, it is painful to sit through hours of public comment. And that one particular issue was many meetings of some hours of public comment. However, people have a right to be heard, and this is the place that they can be heard if they get their form submitted. I think that we cannot sit, and I understand the time, and I think back of, how much more could we have gotten done if it was three minutes? But we also, as a Board, if we have that much public comment, we can vote for that particular meeting to shorten that. But I truly believe that keeping five minutes as our standing policy is appropriate. We have a large District, and we do have students that come and speak. And if I just look at the students alone, I can't justify giving them three minutes to speak. And it's very hard to come up here and speak. And we weren't all born the greatest public speakers in being able to take, you know, three minutes to get across what you're passionate about. So, fair is not always equal, but in this instance, this isn't, to me, this is not fair to our constituents, to our community, to our students, to our parents. And so, I will vote against this policy. Again, we have that opportunity to, if the Board so chooses, to bring up for a particular public comment where it is a lot, then that's a conversation that we should have of, if we have extreme amounts of public comment, do we as a Board agree to shorten that policy for a particular issue? But as a standing policy, I will support keeping that at five minutes, and I will not vote for this policy as written.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. Whew, it's been a year. So, are you coughing because I said it's been a year?
No, I'm not coughing.
Okay. I remember the time when we had our Human Growth and Development discussions at the Board Table, and I made comments about Board Members that left tables. And I, again, well, for the first time, I apologize, Ms. Williams.
Your apology is accepted.
Thank you. Seeing the discussion at the table of changing this policy, you know, initially, I was 100% for it. If you can finish your argument in three minutes, I mean, anything more than three minutes, you're practically rambling. And sometimes there are people that do need a translator. There are sometimes there are people that do have a lengthy debate. But I think one of the things that, you know, from what I'm getting, is that the Board is kind of still torn on this. And I think, in my opinion, I think we as a Board still need to have a discussion about this policy, a little bit more in depth, before we decide to move forward with either settling for three minutes or keeping, I mean, moving to a policy that three-minute public or continue staying at five minutes. Because you are going to have some individuals that are going to come and give, open up their heart, parents that are taking time out of work to come and speak. You are going to also have times that someone's going to come, and they're going to line up 10 speakers, and they're going to hijack the meeting. I think that is something that we can still discuss. One of the things that's really interesting about policies, it's not concrete, so we continue to go back and change it as we go on throughout the school year. But if, I think it deserves more conversation at the Board Table. I would really love, for just my opinion, that we could figure out how we could still get this policy approved, so the Board Governance Committee can come into action. Oh, there's two separate, sorry. Sorry. On another thing, so the Board Governance Committee can get, to actually try to drill down and answer this comment, because I think this falls under the Board Governance Committee. So, that's my point on there. And that's all. Thank you.
About motion to approve Policy 8150.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Policy 8150. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Mrs. Gotti and a second from Ms. Williams to approve the second reading of Policy 8150. Is there any further discussion specific to that policy? Mr. Perlman.
I would just like to reiterate that I would love to hear, you know, I know we vote on Board Presidents to take action. I get that. I really do. But I'm still having a hard time understanding that overcoming our commitment that we're making to increase communication on the Board. And I would just urge folks to read the policy. And, I mean, what it stemmed from was the creation of the Superintendent Search Committee. And so, I was thinking, does the whole Board want that? And we'll never know, because it was just created. And I just don't see the harm in reaching out, talking to one another, before we create a committee. And I, that's all.
So, I would like to address that, because when we, as an officer team, discussed, hey, we should make a temporary committee, it was not me making a unilateral decision. And I did send an email to the whole Board saying, we're going to form this committee. If you're interested in serving on it, let us know. And that would have been a perfect opportunity to, if we had people who said, this committee's not necessary, for them to reply and say, I don't really think this committee's necessary. In this instance, we didn't hear that at all.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. So, to your point, Mr. Perlman, I think you make, your argument is, makes complete sense. I go back to the Board Governance Committee. I really do think, one of the things about this Board Governance Committee is creating communication amongst Board Members. And I think this committee coming into action and actually getting a chance to start bringing concerns from Board Members to the table, on how do we communicate when we create committees? How do we communicate when something happens in the community? How do we communicate with our Superintendent? How does our Superintendent communicate with us? I think this committee, once it is given life, which hopefully, in one minute it can, we could start having those robust conversations in the future. And as the Chair of that committee, it seems like that will be one of our first discussions. How do we communicate to Board Members? How do Board Members communicate amongst each other? Because I think that's something we need to do. To have a sound Board, you have to communicate well. And if you have a committee that one of their main things is communication, we can only get better. So, that's just my point on that. So, thank you.
Ms. Williams. All right, I thought you had your hand up. Okay, seeing no other comment, roll call, please, Mr. Ray, on the second reading of Policy 8150.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Hallman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Perlman.
No.
Ryan.
Aye.
Eight aye, one no. Motion passes.
Motion passes. Do we have any further comments about Policy 8346? Otherwise, and I'm looking at the back of the room, I believe if we don't have a motion, it would go back into the ether of being looked at by the Policy Committee again?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Gotti.
I would just recommend that we take it back to the Policy Committee. Maybe we get input from every Board Member, and maybe there's some things that we can do in writing the policy, when we know we have an excessive number of Board Members. You know, maybe there's a few tweaks we could make to that policy before we bring it back, even though it's already been through first reading.
And, Ms. Williams.
So, I'm asking or requesting from Board Officers to also come back, and the committee as well, of, this is a policy that directly affects our committee, our community, sorry. And so, I would also like to figure out a way to get some community feedback on this, because this is, this is their one opportunity to speak, that we have to listen, whether we like what they're saying or not, whether we agree or we don't. And I think, as we're talking about forums, and that's something that we should be discussing with our constituents, of, are you okay with three minutes or five minutes? And tell us why, or tell us why not. But I'm absolutely happy with this standing right now as it is, until we can have further discussion. Thank you.
Okay, that's almost exactly what I was going to say. All right, we do not have any reports for this evening, so, Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of public interests, for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals, to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, negotiations impending litigation.
Second.
Right, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Williams. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Hallman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Perlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion passes. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for a closed session is for the protection of the public interest, and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, negotiations impending litigation. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 9:48 PM.
How's this Rose?
Rose Gold. So, it's got the special, it's Rose Gold.
Hi, how are you doing? Can't complain, thanks.
Can't complain, thanks.
Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 10:30 PM. Let the record reflect, the meeting is adjourned at 10:30 PM.